Go ahead.
Greetings and good afternoon to all. It is now two twenty P M on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're conducting this hearing virtually via Zoom. Today's hearing is for the case A B seven eighty-six Westbard Avenue at River Road to consider a petition to permanently close the Westbard Avenue at River Road access point in Bethesda's Westbard area. Benjamin Mann submitted the petition on behalf of the Fifty-five Hundred Westbard Avenue Civic Association. The applicant, uh, my name is Joe Thamana, and I am the county executive's designated hearing officer with the county's Department of Transportation. This hearing is being conducted to consider the petition contemplating the permanent closure of an existing access point. My role in this process is to receive comments concerning the petition and then to write a report and recommendation to the county executive concerning the applicant's petition. In order to do this, I will consider statements made during this hearing and written comments received within the common period. Comments will be accepted until October third, two thousand and twenty-three at five P M and should be submitted to Ms. McCray to support or explain a position on this case. For those who wish to submit written comments, please submit them to Ms. Tiara McCray at the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, one hundred Edison Park Drive, fourth floor, Gaithersburg, Maryland, two zero eight seven eight, or email them to tiara dot McCray at Montgomery County M D dot gov by October third, two thousand and twenty-three. There are few ground rules that we must cover before Ms. McCray introduces the applicant's petition into the record. First, please turn off or silence your cell phones. And second, as an issue of decorum, all participants must be given due consideration, given the allotted time. Those seeking to offer comment following the close of petitioner's case are asked to be mindful of their time and limit their comments to relevant matters. There is a considerable amount of people who have requested an opportunity to make a statement during this hearing. I must stress that all comments should be relevant to the case we are considering today. And please do not try to offer statements that are unnecessarily cumulative or repetitive to those made prior. Third, should an interruption occur, I will give that individual their first warning. If there is a second interruption, I will give that individual a second warning and they will be muted. If the same individual receives a third warning, that person will be removed from the call. And if several people interrupt the hearing, I may elect to end the call. Following Ms. McCray's introduction, the applicant will submit its case for why it believes the access point should be permanently closed. After the applicant has completed its case, those registered to speak will be afforded an opportunity to make relevant comments. Given the time constraints for this hearing, it may be more effective for you to provide written comments in lieu of an oral statement. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. McCray.
Just to confirm that everybody can hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tiara McCray. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thamana. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tiara McCray, and I am the Acting Section Chief within the Property Acquisition Section of Montgomery County Department of Transportation. My section is responsible for considering petitions on behalf of the Montgomery County Department of Transportation. As Mr. Thamana noted earlier, this hearing is to consider a petition to permanently close the Westbard Avenue at River Road access point in Bethesda's Westbard area. Ben Mann submitted the petition on behalf of the Fifty-five Hundred Westbard Avenue Civic Association, the applicant. The subject of this case is an access point at the intersection of the northwestern terminus of Westbard Avenue at River Road in Bethesda. Through a letter dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Ben Mann, on behalf of the Fifty-five Hundred, uh, Westbard Avenue Block Civic Association, requested the permanent closure of all vehicular traffic at the Westbard Avenue and River Road intersection. As contemplated in the petition, the applicant notes that the access point would remain open for pedestrian access, and as recommended in the two thousand and sixteen Westbard Sector Plan, the intersection should be reconstructed to create a turnaround. The access point and public right-of-way for Westbard Avenue was originally dedicated to public use in March nineteen fifty-six by the Westwood Shopping Center, plat number forty-four fifty-six, and later mentioned and expanded in the part of blocks D, E, F, G, and H, Westwood subdivision plat number fifty-two-six in October nineteen fifty-seven. In March two thousand and nineteen, in connection with the Westwood Shopping Center Development Plan, Preliminary Plan Number One Two Zero One Seven Zero One Seven Zero and Site Plan Number Eight Two Zero One Eight Zero One Nine Zero, the Montgomery County Planning Department of M N C P P C recommended conditional approval of the preliminary and site plans to include the realignment of Westbard Avenue. As conditioned, the developer Equity One L L C, commonly referred to as Regency Centers, was required to seek the abandonment of portions of county public right-of-way to facilitate the realignment. In April two thousand and twenty-two, the county council adopted Council Resolution Nineteen dash twelve thirteen, conditionally approving the abandonment of five thousand eight hundred ninety-one square feet, more or less, of Westbard Avenue and nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet, more or less, of Ridgefield Road to allow for the realignment. As part of a detour plan for the realignment of Westbard Avenue at Ridgefield Road, Westbard Avenue has experienced closures from vehicular traffic at both the River Road intersection and Ridgefield Road intersection in various stages since June two thousand and twenty-two. Westbard Avenue is presently closed at its intersection with Ridgefield Road due to the construction of the realignment of Westbard Avenue. The applicant asserts in its petition that, as outlined in the two thousand and sixteen Westbard Sector Plan, they are seeking the permanent closure of the existing access point in an effort to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents near the right-of-way as they have experienced heavy vehicular traffic, uh, primarily tractor-trailers and delivery trucks utilizing the residential portion of Westbard Avenue as a cut-through to avoid the River Road and Ridgefield Road intersection. At the time of submitting the petition, the applicant requested that the county not reopen vehicular tra- through traffic, excuse me, on the residential portion of Westbard Avenue between River Road and Ridgefield at the completion of the realignment project. In preparation for the hearing, my office has provided the notices, or excuse me, notices to other public agencies, abutting property owners, and the public at large. During this process, we have collected a number of exhibits that I will now introduce into the record. Uh, if someone could be of support and let me know when you can see my screen, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, I can do that.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right.
It's up. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. And everyone can still hear me, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Exhibit A is the applicant's abandonment petition dated April twenty-seventh from Ben Mann, on behalf of the Fifty-five Hundred Westbard Avenue Civic Association. This package includes a copy of the petition filing fee and various exhibits that support information detailing, detailed within the petition, including police reports of property damage and twenty-three letters of support from homeowners along the residential portion of Westbar. This is pages one through forty-one, and for the sake of time, I will not scroll through each page. But as mentioned, the, uh, record will be uploaded on the Property Acquisition Section website. Exhibit B is the Subject Area Diagram, an aerial image of the intersection of Westbard Avenue at River Road on page forty-two. Exhibit C is Executive Order Number One Thirty-Six dash twenty-three, Executive Order Authorizing the Virtual Public Hearing to Consider the Applicant's Petition on September tw- uh, nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, page forty-three. Exhibit D is the two thousand and sixteen Westbard Sector Plan, page thirty-seven. Uh, of this plan highlights the section of the, of the, uh, plan that endorses the permanent closure of the residential portion of Westbard Avenue between River Road and Ridgefield Road at the River Road end. The plan notes that the closure should not occur until the existing intersection is realigned with a right-angle turn and that the closed end should have a three-inch multiple curb for emergency vehicular access. Page forty-four. Pages forty-five through forty-six, Exhibit E, Comment Solicitation Email, an email dated June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to county agencies and public utility companies seeking input on the permanent closure request. Exhibit F is a Department of Permitting Services Fire and Rescue Service comment. It's an email correspondence from Marie La Baud dated July, excuse me, June second through July eleventh, noting their opposition to a permanent, non-accessible closure at the Westbard Avenue and River Road intersection as it violates two provisions of county law. Ms. La Baud further indicates her support for an apparatus accessible closure and willingness to so- to work with all involved parties to determine what apparatus, um, what that apparatus would look like. That's pages forty-seven through fifty-one. Exhibit G is a W S S C Water Comment, an email dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three from Raymond Chica, Professional Engineer, indicating no objection to the road closure, but noting should a future abandonment be sought, that an easement would need, uh, would be required as W S S C has an active water main in the right-of-way. Pages fifty-two to fifty-three. Exhibit H is the Montgomery County Planning Board, M N C P P C, comment. Uh, a letter dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, from Board Chair Artie Harris in, uh, indicating the planning board's five-to-zero vote in favor of transmitting the Planning Board Staff Report in support of installing an interim closure, subject to M C D O T's analysis and design of the Westbard Avenue, uh, excuse me, the design of Westbard Avenue after the realignment is complete. Additionally, the board, the board voted to include additional language in support of installing an interim closure of Westbard Avenue at River Road. This is pages fifty-four through, um, one eighteen. Exhibit I is the Department of Transportation Development Review Team Comment. It's a letter dated August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from Rebecca Torma, D R C Manager, indicating the two thousand and sixteen Westbard Sector Plan, uh, specifies that the road should be closed after the realigned Westbard Avenue is completed, projected in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. She recommends further study of the traffic operations at Westbard Avenue at River Road once the realignment project is complete. Page one nineteen. Exhibit J is the General Public Hearing Notice, the letter dated August fourth, submitted to affected properties along the residential portion of Westbard Avenue and was subsequently, uh, sent to HOAs and civic associations that did not have registered email address on file with Montgomery County Planning Board. A list of those properties that received this notice is included on the second page of this exhibit. That's pages one twenty to one twenty-two. Exhibit K is the Certified Mailing Receipts, two certified mail receipts and tracking information tickets for letters submitted to the Tam and Jovanovic. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Forgive me if I am not. Families, to date, although the notice was submitted on August tenth, two thousand and, uh, twenty-three, the letters are still moving through the U S P S facility. That's pages one twenty-three to one twenty-four. Exhibit L are the returned mailings of general public notice, two, uh, returned letters addressed, um, uh, as shown to, uh, to the, uh, property owners as shown, which were unable to forward. That's page one twenty-five. Exhibit M is the Comment Solicitation Emails that was submitted to HOAs and civic associations, uh, email dated August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, requesting public input and providing notice of today's public hearing to all HOAs and civic associations registered with the planning board. A list of those gro- groups, excuse me, that received this notice via email is included in subsequent pages of this exhibit. Those highlighted, uh, received this notice via mail as no email was on file. That's pages one twenty-six through one twenty-nine. Exhibit N, M C D O T Calendar Submission Confirmation, uh, from August, oop, sorry. One second. Okay, sorry. Exhibit N. Um, I think, exhibit N, uh, as, as noted, M C D O T Calendar Submission from August eighth. All right. Exhibit O is the M C D O T Press Release Go Montgomery Newsletter, um, advertising the public hearing um, on August thirty-first, two thousand and, uh, twenty-three, pages one thirty-two to one thirty-three. Exhibit P, Washington Times, ad number seven four two five, Washington Times ad noting the advertisement run dates for September first and eighth of this year, pages one thirty-four. Exhibit Q, the Department of Transportation Division of Traffic Engineering and Operations Traffic Sign Installation.
I think you have it wrong. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience. Exhibit P, thank you, and Exhibit Q. All right. All right. Exhibit Q is the Installation Notice dated August seventeenth from D T E O, indicating two traffic signs advertising the hearing have been installed at the requested locations. The subsequent pages of this exhibit include pictures of each sign and the requested locations of installation. That's pages one thirty-five, uh, through one thirty-eight. Okay, it's being awkward. All right. Exhibit R is the Westwood Shopping Center Preliminary Plan Number One Twenty, One Seventy, One Seventy, and Site Plan Number Eight Two Zero One Eighty, One Ninety, pages thirty-one through thirty-two of sixty-three. Uh, Figures Nineteen, the Westbard Avenue Realignment Plan Detail, and Figure Twenty, the Pedestrian Vehicular Circulation, Phase Two of Westwood Two and Manor Care, from the Preliminary Plan and Site Plan from Montgomery County Planning Department of M N C P P C, depicting the realigned Westbard Avenue and access points of the proposed Manor Care and Westwood Two sites. That's pages one thirty-nine to one forty. And Exhibit S is the Westbard Avenue two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty Traffic Studies. Uh, these indicate the traffic and speed studies completed by M C D O T, D T O, on Westbard Avenue from October twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, and January twenty-fourth through the January thirtieth of twenty twenty, of twenty twenty, detailing counts from a speed and class study for Westbard Avenue at the request of local residents and council members at the time. That's pages one forty-one to one seventy-seven. To ensure I've got the right page, because it's being a bit awkward. All right. Exhibit T is General Public Comments. Uh, to date, eighty-six general public comments have been received from county residents, the Springfield Civic Association, and the Council of Unit Owners of Kenwood Place Condominium Association. That is pages one seventy-eight through three hundred and eighteen. All right. Exhibit U are relevant plaids, plat number four, uh, forty-four fifty-six from nineteen fifty-six, plat numbers fifty-two-six from nineteen fifty-seven, depicting Westbard Avenue and the access point to public use. That's pages three nineteen to three twenty. Exhibit V is County Council Resolution Number Nineteen dash twelve thirteen, ca- conditionally approving the abandonment of portions of Westbard Avenue and Ridgefield Road to facilitate the realignment of Westbard Avenue, pages three twenty-one to three twenty-two. Exhibit W is the Public Hearing Registration List, uh, showing eighty-two registrants, the applicant, and four county staff members. That's pages nine, three nineteen, excuse me, to three twenty-one. And finally, Exhibit X, which is the applicant's hearing presentation, pages three twenty-two to three forty-six. At this time, I will turn this back over to you, Mr. Thamana. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Okay, so, uh, the next step is for the applicant to, uh, go ahead and present his case, and, uh, we do have a five-minute time limit. Uh, just want to make sure we, we put that out there before we start.
Um, five minutes on the applicant presentation. I was told that there would not be a, a time limit applied to the applicant. I thought that was for public comment.
The, the public comment is restricted to a minute because of the large number of people that have signed up. We, we, we do want to try and keep it as short as possible. Of course, we will consider everything in a written, uh, you know, testimony or anything that is submitted.
It's a kind of complicated case, and I spent a pretty long time putting together a presentation under the understanding I'd have thirty minutes to, to go through it, or are you completely sure of the?
You, 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 you can, of course, submit the, the presentation, and we will consider that with the, with the written comments that we receive. But to, to provide an unlimited amount of time for the presentation would, would just make this too long, given the number of people that have registered to speak.
I just want to make clear that I was told that I would have, um, a much more substantial amount of time, and I'm really not sure where to cut it down. Um.
Mr. Thamana, there are, there are folks in the comments that are yielding their time to the presenter. Um. I'm not sure if you'd like to give him additional time as a result.
Well, we, okay, we can, we can make it ten minutes, so that gives, you know, a little bit more time, uh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best. I understand everybody needs to have time. I just, uh, uh, anyways, um. Okay, am I sharing my screen here?
Uh, it's loading up now.
Yes.
Uh, before you start, Ben, I just want to remind everyone, please keep yourself muted until, uh, you're called upon to unmute yourself. Thank you for your cooperation.
My name is Ben Mann. I'm the president of the Fifty-five Hundred Westbard Avenue Block Civic Association. We're requesting this permanent closure. Um, for logistical reasons, the right-of-way cannot be closed to emergency vehicles in the short term. Therefore, we're requesting our petition be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, permanent closure to all vehicles, except emergency vehicles, to be implemented immediately after the completion of the Westbard Road Realignment Project or approval of this petition, whichever occurs later. Number two, when the end of the Fifty-five Hundred block is reconstructed into a turnaround, as called for by the sector plan, the closure of the right-of-way may be extended to include emergency vehicles, but only if the newly reconstructed turnaround design is first approved by D P S Fire and Rescue Services for accessibility. And number three, given that we don't know how long it might take M C D O T to design, fund, and construct the turnaround, we request that the time period allowed before this condition would cause the entire closure to be revoked by operation of law, under County Code Section Forty-nine dash sixty-five D, be extended to thirty years. I'm going to jump to the second page here. Uh, one year ago, on October twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, Sarah Langenkamp was struck and killed by a flatbed truck just two blocks from the intersection in question. It happened in front of the Beacon Building Product Site next door to the American Plant Center. The truck driver was driving south on River Road, turning into a driveway, a turn which is not subject to any traffic controls. The intersection which we are asking to have closed poses a similar danger. This intersection is not subject to any traffic controls. Well, per the, uh, studies already entered into the record, ten thousand cars and trucks per week pass through this intersection, thousands of them making the illegal turn on to, left onto River Road, which is prohibited at all times. Meanwhile, cyclists traveling southbound down River Road's bikeable shoulder hope that none of those ten thousand cyclists per week crossing multiple lanes of traffic without a traffic signal forget to look uphill for the cyclists. It happened last year. It all, we all pray it doesn't happen again. According to Vision Zero, road safety is a shared responsibility among everyone, including those who design, build, operate, and use the road system. If our petition is denied by the transportation decision-makers in this county, the cut-through traffic on our block will resume, putting cyclists on River Road and pedestrians on Westbard Avenue in danger once again. Granting our petition would funnel all traffic moving between River Road and the core of Westbar to the meticulously planned, brand-new, modern, cutting-edge, and above all, safe new intersection at River Road. No one could possibly claim with a straight face that it's safer for all those cars to turn at an uncontrolled intersection and speed down a residential block. Those drivers who cut through our block, seeking to shave a few seconds off their commute by going around the traffic signal, they are by definition the most aggressive drivers on the road. This especially applies to those making the illegal left turn, which are counted at four thousand four hundred and fifty per week in the last study. The two thousand and sixteen master plan laid out the solution to this. Realign Westbard Avenue and close off this, uh, this public right-of-way. This is page fourteen from the Vision Zero two thousand and twenty-four twenty-five Action Plan, which you'll notice contains an extremely relevant action item. S five, Corridor Access Management. Assess and remediate safety concerns created by uncontrolled turning movements to and from arterial and collector roads to neighborhoods and driveways with direct access with a specific focus on left-turn safety issues. It is right there, clear as crystal. This intersection perfectly meets Vision Zero's description of an intersection in need of corridor access management. This should be an easy call, given that the master plan already calls for this intersection to be closed, and the danger can be abated by, in fifteen minutes, by placing orange plastic barricades across the mouth of the intersection, and especially given that the county has already studied and endorsed this closure during the most recent sector plan process. The closure might, we are requesting, would not have prevented last year's fatal accident, but it might prevent next year's. Per County Statute Section Forty-nine dash sixty-three, C two A, when considering health, safety, and welfare issues, the council may consider any adopted land use plan applicable to the neighborhood. Here you can see the language from the two thousand and sixteen Westbard Sector Plan, page thirty-seven. We all know in Montgomery County, master plans do not carry the force of law. Further government action is required before any of its terms can be implemented. However, master plans are the end result of a multi-year process of public engagement with various government agencies, and they should not be ignored lightly. That language in the sector plan does not exist in a vacuum. It is crucial to understand where it came from. The residents of the Fifty-five Hundred block have been advocating for a solution for decades, and during the development of the two thousand and sixteen West, West, Westbard Sector Plan, neighborhood finally got the attention of county government officials. You can see from the highlighted text on page nine of the Planning Board Staff Report. Quote, "Staff worked with M C D O T, M C D P S Fire and Rescue, and Sector Plan stakeholders to reach consensus on a compromise. That compromise was recorded on page thirty-seven of the sector plan as approved by the county council and adopted by M N C P P C," end quote. Though all those agencies commenting on this petition were involved in the formulation of that language, and to be clear, this language was indeed a compromise. We wanted this road closed off back in two thousand and sixteen when these discussions occurred, but M C D O T and the county council determined that it would have been premature then because this road was still needed for large trucks to be able to access the core of Westbar due to the challenging geometry at the existing intersection. The compromise was that this road would remain open until the road realignment occurred and could be closed afterwards. This has been memorialized in the county's own legislative history. See the County Council Staff Report, written by Glenn Orland, dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. I'm going to skip over most of this because I have nowhere near enough time to discuss it, but this block used to be a cul-de-sac. Back into, in nineteen fifty-six, when, when the original dedication was made, it was thought that this would be the access road to Westbar. That's not what happened. Ridgefield Road became the access, and they put a traffic light there. This would remain the cul-de-sac up until nineteen sixty-two. This is a satellite photo of, uh, of the neighborhood in nineteen sixty-two, and you can see that this road was not built at that time. Ridgefield and Springfield were the connectors, but we're asking to go back to the old cul-de-sac. The comments of the Planning Board. Uh, on July twenty-seventh, the Montgomery County Planning Board voted unanimously to support our petition for permanent closure, and they also voted unanimously in support of our request that this closure commence immediately upon completion of the road realignment project. It's important to understand that, that they, they voted in favor of not just, uh, the eventual closure here, which would be studied for multiple years, but to have it closed immediately and that the study period following the permanent closure would be to study how to construct the permanent closure, how to, to redesign it. It will have to be implemented temporarily through plastic barriers or perhaps a mountable curb. The permanent design will take The permanent design will take time, and we accept that. That's not a problem. What we want to avoid is having cut-through traffic resume in three months when the construction project is completed. Where we agree with planning staff, despite our disagreements with planning staff regarding the timing and nature of the permanent closure, we are grateful for their clarity regarding the statutory requirements for closure. Planning staff spent quite some time laying out the facts, analyzing them, and concluding that our petition does indeed meet the requirements for a permanent closure. On page thirteen, the planning board staff states, quote, "Based on the public process and County Council approval of the sector plan's endorsement to close Westbard Avenue at River Road, the intersection is not necessary for present or anticipated public use in the foreseeable future. This segment of Westbard Avenue was not intended for heavy truck or through traffic accessing the Westbard Shopping Center," end quote. We heartily agree with Westboard, with the planning, planning board staff on this point. Uh, jumping over to another comment that the planning board staff made, quote, "Closure of the residential portion of Westbard Avenue would eliminate the practice of using it as a bypass for the intersection of Ridgefield and River Road. The closure therefore complements the realignment project and ensures that heavy trucks will no longer use the residential segment of the street. Reducing the number of heavy trucks on the residential portion of Westbard Avenue will improve public health and safety of residents near the closure," end quote. Um, continuing to move forward here, skip this one. Uh, this is the twenty-sixteen letter sent by the Springfield Civic Association in support of, uh, this permanent closure. Um, I understand that some residents of Springfield, including the president of the SCA, have written letters in opposition. Uh, what has changed since then to cause some residents to no longer support something they supported heartily in twenty-sixteen is very simple, the temporary detour plan. MCDOT and DPS in twenty-twenty-one decided to approve a complete closure of the Westbard-Ridgefield connection between River Road and the core of Westbard. This drove enormous amounts of cut-through traffic into the Springfield neighborhood. The Springfield neighborhood, led by the, uh, SCA Board, became irate, understandably. However, in a misguided attempt, uh, to, uh, alleviate matters in the neighborhood, the SCA advocated for resuming cut-through traffic on the fifty-five hundred block of Westbard. MCDOT denied this request. However, as a result, we've only had fifteen months of simmering resentment amongst the residents of Springfield. They are confusing the results of the temporary detour plan with the permanent new alignment. Once the new road opens, traffic struggles will evaporate in Springfield. And if our petition is not, uh, approved, we will be back to dealing with worse cut-through traffic than any street in Springfield has ever suffered at the worst points during this detour plan. In fact, this closure, whether it's approved or not, no one in Springfield will even notice at all. If our block over here is closed off, the shortest cut-through route through the neighborhood becomes Ridgefield up to Springfield. Drivers who are looking at this don't think, oh, well, I can't cut through there. Where can I cut through? Drivers think, what's the shortest way for me to get home? The intended route home, if you're headed north, is to turn left onto River Road. That route involves one left turn, zero right turns, zero speed bumps, zero stop signs. If you're going to cut through the neighborhood and take the shortest alternative, Ridgefield to Springfield, that involves three left turns, one right turn, three speed bumps, one stop sign. It boggles the mind to think that anyone would, would, would expect that that's going to be a desirable cut-through route. Our street has been-
That we are at about ten minutes, so if you could wrap up.
All right, uh, the same applies to the next slide, just in reverse. Uh, these are all the routes which we'd like to have cut off. None of them have public utility. This is the new road. It is extremely robust. Five lanes of through traffic, a dedicated slip lane. I don't know why the county would spend millions and millions of dollars building this safe route only to allow traffic to cut the corner, uh, a, a, and go around the traffic light. And, uh, just a quick conclusion here, uh, in conclusion, the opposition to our position, petition is either calling for an unnecessary multi-year study or for the permanent status quo to be permanently maintained. A brand-new intersection and access route to the core of Westbard's nearing completion at a cost of many millions of dollars. This is an uncontrolled intersection between a neighborhood and a highway, which Vision Zero specifically calls out as a type of intersection that should be remediated. The planning board and the County Council have already agreed that this intersection should be permanently closed once the realigned road opens. The residents of this block, with substantial support from residents in the rest of Springfield, have been patiently waiting for Montgomery County to fulfill the promise it made to us in twenty-sixteen. Please demonstrate that we were right to place our trust in local government in twenty-sixteen, reaffirm the compromise memorialized in the sector plan, and approve our petition. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and you know, I do, do want to mention that we will consider everything that you submit. So if you submit the presentation, we will consider all of that in our, uh, process. So with that, we can move ahead to, uh, any speakers that have registered to speak. Tiara, you want to start?
Yes, thank you. I have, um, uh, Michael Shen Young up first.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Tiara, for that incredible opening. And Jose, I mean, I saw the size of the package, three hundred and fifty pages, and that's incredible. So, um, I certainly know that we've gone through a huge due process.
One second. Can you please, uh, Mr. Man, can you please stop sharing your screen?
Right, so I can share.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm gonna, um, share my screen and I'll continue. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you. So I submitted, uh, an email on Sunday night, um, you know, trying to reinforce some of the issues. Um, I, instead of going through a lot of what Ben showed with respect to the paths, I think it boils down to really just two use cases. And I think if you read any of the opposition to this, um, to this closure, you'll find no, none of that opposition ever mentions the actual usage of the intersection. The opposition is, well, we think there may be additional traffic, which Ben, you know, uh, very particularly explained why that shouldn't be the case. But none of that opposition actually talks about use of the intersection. So I'd like to focus on the facts. The use case of the intersection is only two things. One is trucks traveling from, trucks and cars traveling south on River Road, east-southeast, trying to turn right. Notice that they have already passed Springfield intersection. So by the time they've passed Springfield intersection, there's no more decision as to should I cut through the Springfield neighborhood. It's, should I turn right at this old intersection, which is dangerous, partially blind, cars and trucks are still traveling, most of the times within thirty-five miles per hour? And how do I know? I happen to live exactly at that intersection. I've lived there for twenty-five years. I've seen accidents. I'm only gonna show you some pictures of them. But the point is, when you, when residents have said in opposition that we're shocked by, we don't want you to block this intersection. We don't care if drivers only have to travel ten seconds further. We want to keep your intersection open. So we want to continue to expose you to dangers. We want to expose the accidents. We want to expose the speeding trucks and cars going through. By the way, because I live at the end of that road, and my house is on the left-hand side of Westbard Avenue, trucks, large trucks also tear down the cable line, tetla and the telephone lines because the poles are on the other side of the street. But again, this is what I've lived through for twenty-five years, and I was part of the whole process of the Westward Sector Plan and supporting lower density and our streets. So what we ask is, this new intersection, only ten seconds further on east, uh, east on River Road, built with a curved turning lane at Ben Show, stoplight which handles better traffic control, and then once the trucks and cars turn right at the new intersection, only ten seconds away, it's two lanes going up Westward. It's not going through the old Westward Avenue intersection in the first-
Yeah, we are, we are at time, so, uh, if you could wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap up. The second use case is, why turn left? If you turn left, you're turning left on the old Westward block to only have a no-left turn. You can only go three more seconds and you get to the new intersection. And the last point, which is probably the most critical point, is anyone who wants to say they don't need a study or they want to study, these are pictures, again, because I live at the intersection, of the dangers of that intersection. And if you do not close this, there's muscle memory of trucks and cars who will continue to try and turn on our lane instead of going ten seconds further, and these are the things that, uh, we experience as residents. So we will be disparate, disparately impacted, and we appreciate everyone's decision-making and realizing ten seconds is not too much to ask. We're not second-class citizens. We should be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up to speak is Ray Hilton Senior.
Moon, and we have not lived for a long time on the Westward Avenue. In fact, we've only been in that community for about three months. But even in the three months that we've been here, it's been clear to me that the, the need to have an environment where our children can run around and play safely on the streets is critical. We have a fair amount of elderly families who crisscross that street, who walk for exercise. And my wife and I have tried to imagine what it would look like when, if, if we were to permanently keep those, keep the, uh, Westward Avenue open from River Road. The stories that I've heard already gives us caution, gives us pause in trying to picture cars speeding through and maybe not recognizing children or older adults crossing the street. I ju, I just anticipate that we're gonna see, we're gonna see some serious accidents that will litter on the grid. So yes, I'm new to the conversation, new to the area, but everything that I know about safety and how, how, um, pedestrians and people living in a community need to be protected. It says to me that by opening that up, it's gonna create, uh, tremendous jeopardy. So that's the angle from which we're coming from and would encourage, would encourage all of us to consider, uh, closing that one end of Westward Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Phyllis Edelman.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, good afternoon. My name is Phyllis Edelman. And from twenty-fourteen to twenty-seventeen, I was president of the Springfield Civic Association when the Westward Sector Plan was discussed and approved by the County Council. The intent of closing this block of Westward Avenue at River Road was to force traffic to the most direct route to the new development, what has now been signed as Brookside Drive and River Road, and to prevent cut-through traffic, particularly trucks with two or more axles from using this block as a pass-through at all hours of the day and night. Signs and speed humps, even in twenty-sixteen, were not enough of a deterrent. With continuing construction at Westward Square, um, to, until, expected until twenty-twenty-six, which will increase the commercial space and add up to three hundred residential units, so there are more trucks that will, truck traffic will increase. And it will not only be disruptive for this block, which it has been prior to its closure, but it will also be dangerous and not in compliance with Vision Zero for the families who live there. That was the intent then, and I hope that the powers that be understand that's the intent now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Kisca Williams. Kisca Williams. All right.
She's muted. No, she's here, but she's muted. Kisca, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone. Hello. My name is Kisca Williams. Uh, I heartily support everything that Ben said, much more articulately than I could. So I'm gonna kind of skip through my points. Uh, first of all, closing Westward at River Road would align with the Vision Zero safety strategy. I'm a twenty-five-year resident right on the corner of Westward and Ridgefield and observed cut-through traffic for years, especially during rush hour. And this is the same time that our schoolchildren are walking to school or to their bus stops. We have three speed bumps, restricted hours, and a permanent no-left turn island that are completely ignored then and will be again. When the new River Road exit opens, there will be a wide, safe passageway for all types of vehicles. It is a mere, Michael said ten seconds. He drives faster than I do. It took me twenty seconds from a full stop at the old Westward exit to get to the new alignment. I acknowledge the neighbors' fears that closing Westward could divert traffic into Springfield, especially along Ridgefield, but as demonstrated before, there is absolutely no reasonable shortcut from River Road via Ridgefield into the neighborhood. So thank you one and all for all of the work that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, uh, Lilja, excuse me. Oh, excuse me, Jan, Janice Lilja. My apologies.
Yes, I'm Jan Lilja. I'm president of the Springfield Civic Association, which, uh, up until today included Westward. I've just learned that there's a Westward Civic Association with a president, so that's news to us. Previously, Westward was part, is part, we consider Westward to be part of Springfield. And as of July, the, uh, two people who testified, uh, for Westward said that they were dues-paying members of the Springfield Civic Association. I believe this petition is not totally consistent with the Westward Sector Plan language. The, the language in the sector plan allows the neighborhood to apply for Westward closure. The neighborhood involved in the discussions at that time was the Springfield Civic Association, represented by Phyllis, as she stated. The Springfield Civic Association and Springfield were not aware of the petition that was submitted in April. We were not consulted and we did not participate in it. Therefore, I do not think that the entire neighborhood was applied for the Westward closure. Further, the petition is supposed to be submitted after the road construction is completed. The road construction has not been completed. The roads are not opened. It is not clear at what time these roads will be opened, and due time should be allowed to see how they operate and are functioning successfully, we hope. Finally, there needs to be access for emergency vehicles. Petitioners' previous, uh, formal application asked for an impassable barrier. I think that is very dangerous for the new assisted living center and other residents of the neighborhood. I do not agree with that. I do not think it is consistent with the sector plan. The, there should be a study of the traffic flow for the entire Springfield neighbor upon the completion of the new plans. This is what was recommended by the Planning Board Staff. It was not reflected in the petitioner's sign, um, slides. There needs to be, that study needs to occur for an extended period. So, and after the, the road work has been completed, after the townhouses that are going to be built-
At time, if you could wrap up, please.
So I ask that this study be conducted. I have, um, articulated reasons for that in my written testimony, and I recommend right now that the Department of Transportation reject or defer this petition until the roads' construction is completed, they are functioning. We can recognize how traffic flows across the entire Springfield neighborhood, and the study includes traffic safety modi, modifications for all of Springfield, including Westward and the streets which include Cromwell, where the elementary school is, and the streets that provide access to the neighborhood churches, including Ridgefield. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Um, up next we have Ms. Catherine Spindel.
Okay, great. Hello. My question concerns the no-left turn for vehicles on the corner of Massachusetts Avenue and Little Falls Parkway during certain hours, uh, during rush hour hours, so in the morning and in the afternoon and evening. The cars now completely ignore the no-left turn when they're on Mass Ave and want to turn onto Little Falls. when they're on Mass Ave and want to turn onto Little Falls because they are trying to access River Road and they can no longer do it on West Bard. So I'm wondering how that will proceed, what that will look like if West Bard is permanently shut to River Road. There is no, cars just line up and block Massachusetts Avenue. And, um, sometimes a cop is there giving them tickets and sometime, mostly not. So what will happen at that traffic corner? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next, we have John Shartar, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name.
Yep, you're fine. Um, and I will, uh, share my, if I can, uh, here we go. My screen.
Yes, sir.
There, okay. Um, I'm speaking to you as the Traffic and Safety Officer of the Springfield Civic Association, not as a resident. Uh, we are a neighborhood of six hundred fifty homes. The twenty-four homes on this block are a part of our neighborhood, but there are over six hundred more. There are approximately eight hundred children who live in our neighborhood, and I'm speaking on behalf of them. Prior to construction, a traffic count was conducted on Ridgefield Road. There were less than one thousand cars per day. In two thousand twenty-two, beginning with the closure of West Bard Avenue, that number grew to five thousand four hundred cars per day. That's more than five times as many. During rush hour, that was one car every seven seconds. How long does it take for a child to cross the road? Similar problems exist on other roads. There are one hundred fifty-six homes on Cromwell Drive, Springfield Drive, and Ogden Road. Those are the roads that are highlighted in red on my screen. After the road, after the closure of West Bard Avenue, traffic on those roads tripled, three thousand five hundred cars per day, up to four hundred cars per hour. This is not acceptable. This is not safe. In the application for closure, it's asserted that the West Bard Sector Plan endorses the permanent closure of this road, but that's not entirely accurate and leaves out a key detail. The goal of realigning West Bard Avenue on page eight of the sector plan was to realign West Bard Road to, I'll skip to the end, to protect single-family neighborhoods, not one street, but neighborhoods. It was to be considered, but it had to be safe, it had to be feasible. It's the opinion of the association that the closure of West Bard Avenue is unjustified at this time. It's not that it shouldn't be closed, it shouldn't be closed without further study, without evidence that the road realignment has been successful, as Mr. Mann asserts. I hope that what he says does play out. And also not until the thirty-four townhomes that are scheduled to begin construction in just a matter of months are completed. We learned last year how fragile our road network was.
We are at time, if you could wrap up, please.
Yep, one sentence. It would be unsafe and irresponsible to the entire six hundred and fifty house neighborhood to close this block at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have James. And I apologize, I have James T.
James Tam or James Tishener.
Tishener. I don't see him in the, uh, in our participants list anymore. We'll move forward with Edward. I see someone under Ted Hermes, is that correct?
Yeah, sorry. That's the thing. I, I didn't hear you say Hermes, so I apologize. Yeah.
No worries.
No, full name is Edward Hermes, yeah. And thank you for your time, and, um, I'm participating in this, um, today to request that Montgomery County reject the application for this premature, uh, closure of the right-of-way uh, at West Bard. I believe the application was submitted prematurely and is not consistent with the sector plan therefore, and does not have the support of the community. It was, I view, would have been premature to request the closure in two thousand and sixteen, and it's still premature. Uh, for a little background on myself, I'm a resident of Springfield Community. I'm a past board member of the Springfield Civic Association and was the, uh, chair, the traffic chair of the Civic Association at the time. This was all being studied. I was actively involved in working with the planners in the community uh, on the West Bard Road realignment. Uh, and recall the discussion on the closure of River, uh, West Bard at River Road. It was recommended in the original plan and always understood by the community that this closure would happen after construction, and all applications submitted would happen at the same time, sometime after the realignment. Closure after construction was intentional and was part of the plan from the beginning. Um, I believe you're gonna hear from others in our community that strongly oppose, oppose the closure because we've all learned that the road closures, any road closures affect the entire community. Um, closing of West Bird at River Road has and will continue to send cut-through traffic to exit on Ogden and Springfield and through the entire Springfield community, if done prematurely. Given all the construction and road closures that-
We're at time, if you could wrap up.
And the detours that we've been through, I believe that the focus should be on opening the new roads and understanding the new traffic before we consider any closures in the community. I would suggest that the timing of the application was ill-conceived and does not have the support of the planners and the community. And I therefore respectfully request that Montgomery County reject this application uh, and require that a new application be submitted after the construction is completed.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Up next, we have Patricia, um, Spangler.
Hi, yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Pat Spangler. I'm a homeowner in the fifty-five-hundred block of Ridgefield Road in Spring, in the Springfield neighborhood. So this has directly impacted, uh, myself and my family. I'm here to speak against the permanent closure of West Bard Avenue. This is because I and my Ridgefield Road neighbors were subject to the closure of West Bard during an earlier phase of the realignment, and the impact was extreme. There was a tremendous increase in traffic and noise and hazard due to the number of vehicles and speeding drivers. On many occasions, we couldn't even back out of our driveway. Um, and if West Bard Avenue were to be closed permanently, there would likely be a similar impact, which would be an extreme and really undue burden on the residents of Ridgefield Road. But, um, because it can't really at present be known how the final realignment will affect West Bard and Ridgefield traffic, I respectfully suggest that any plan to close West Bard Avenue be delayed until after the completion of the realignment and further studies are completed so that a true reading of the impact of the real, realignment can be assessed.
Thank you.
Up next, I have George Jovanovich. Uh, not seeing him in the chat. I will move to the next person.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. I'm sorry. I'm here. Uh, Madame, sure, person, uh, my wife and I have been, uh, living on West Ward Avenue near the intersection with River Road for twenty-five years, which is long enough to witness many traffic-related accidents and many close calls. This intersection presented a clear danger to public safety of the residents, which include children and elderly adults as well. We have to recognize that River Road is actually a four-lane divided highway where speed limit is often ignored. And from that traffic pattern, vehicles, including trucks, were making quick turns to residential West Bard Avenue, presenting clear danger to public safety. Now, we already heard that in two thousand sixteen, Montgomery County Council approved West Bard Sector Plan that includes closure of the intersection at West Bard Avenue. And we simply want the implementation of that sector plan. So our petition of A B seven-eight-six aligns with also with the county's Vision Zero policy to eliminate traffic death and serious injuries and to eliminate noise and air pollution in the residential street. So it is now crucial that Montgomery County Council live up to its earlier decision also for the sake of trust in public institutions. Now, I would also like to add here that against what some members of the Springfield Civic Association just mentioned, I would like to reiterate that in two thousand sixteen, Springfield Civic Association agreed to the closure of the intersection. Now, decision on reopening or closure of the intersection should be based on its own merits or relevant facts, not on plain outvoting by a larger group of the Springfield residents. That is not that, uh, not that close and not often directly affected by the intersection.
We're at time, if you could wrap up.
Let me, let me wrap up. Our rationale for closure of the intersection for the cut-to traffic is based on the issue of public safety, while the opponents wish to keep the intersection open with no valid proven arguments, making the reopening of the intersection a matter of possible fear or convenience to them. However, even that point is questionable. There is a direct access, as we already heard, to River Road via Springfield Road.
We do, we do need to wrap up. It's, it's-
Okay, thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Cynthia Green. I'm not seeing Ms. Green in the chat. Next person, we have Robert G.
Yep, Robert Gerard. Um, I'd be very brief. I've written this out, so I can be brief. Try and keep it to a minute. I've edited as, uh, other people have made their comments. My major comment is the closing our neighbors on Ridgefield Road and elsewhere in the neighborhood who feel that closing West Bard River will adversely impact them fail to understand that traffic was forced to use their streets and those other green-colored routes on John's map only for the months that both West Bard at River Road and the old Ridgefield and River Road were closed. That was the only way to get to the shopping center was through our neighbor's neighborhood. Once the road is finished, there'll be no necessity to cut through the neighborhood. As, um, Ben showed on his maps, the logical route for somebody coming up West Bard will be to go straight down to River and continue out in the morning to come down River to what will now be called Brookside, I believe. Take a left and, and merge with West Bard Avenue and continue. So closing West Bard Avenue will not inconvenience anyone other than the scofflaws who, five times a week, ignoring the signs forbidding turns onto West Bard from River in the morning and the signs forbidding left turns from West Bard onto River in the evenings, they'll be the ones, they will have to drive one hundred and twenty meters further, ten seconds to the new intersection, which is being built now right outside my window. And we have lived here, incidentally, on West Bard Avenue for roughly thirty years. That's it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Uh, the new list has been updated in the chat. Next is Susan Zhang. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Susan.
So, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, hi, um, we actually need, um, on this blog for nearly thirty years. Um, so, um, before, um, I want to see, um, actually, people after the newly aligned road, the, there's only, I do, speed of twenty miles per hour, only need four seconds more if people go through the newer, uh, nine, uh, nine road than through cuts through West Bard. So that's at twenty miles, only four seconds. Okay, and I think the Springfield, uh, neighborhood is by the block between Springfield Drive and then the West Bard. They're about forty households. They are concerned that the traffic used to cut through West Bard. Now, if we close, they're gonna cut through theirs. And I think that's a, I think that's, that's not actually true because if based on rational human behavior and also the, um, easier, um, all this new road, and people will automatically go down over there. And besides, are we are really concerned the big trucks of cutting through over us in addition to their trucks and the small cars. But even right now, has any, um, one experienced the cutting through trucks through the River Road to go down, through Ridgefield, go down to that shopping center? No, so they're just, we just saw those trucks between there, and the trucks, um-
We're, we're at time, if you could wrap up, please.
Okay, and a really quick point also, I want to point out to the president, and he has, she has opposition in his written statement, I think one fact is wrong. Um, to just quick two points. First of all, he said the road now is narrower and they have less platform for pedestrians. Everybody can go there to see. That's not true. Second, and he said, and there's only even closer to exit on our side, there's only one access to the senior center. So the emergency, um, for the seniors' help is, uh, you know, could be, uh, limited, which is not true. And then because you have-
You do need to wrap up. It's, it's well beyond your time. Thank you. You can submit a written, written testimony too.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Tiara, I know we do have a hard stop at three thirty. I do want to mention that. Uh, so for the people that have registered to speak and have not had the opportunity to speak, we will have a follow-up meeting, and Tiara can, you can talk about those once you reach the end.
Okay, up next, we have Carl Becker. Carl Becker, I see you in the, in the participants list.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I just want to say that I think this is a a very positive thing for the homeowners on that section of road who have endured this cut-through traffic for, it sounds like up to thirty years. And, uh, from what I'm hearing, it makes a lot of sense to close off that road and, and, uh, make it a cul-de-sac. Um, I, I did hear the concerns of some of the people uh, mentioning cut-through traffic onto Ridgefield Road and other parts of the neighborhood, but I don't believe that was an issue prior to, uh, West Bard being closed or when the two access points were closed during construction. And I, I think we'll return back to a far superior roadway design here in the next couple of months, so, um, looking forward to seeing that closed off hopefully. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I know the screen, uh, says Phyllis Ed- Edelman up next. She's already spoken. Um, Richard Hoy. Richard Hoy. Uh, no longer in our participants list, but I can see, uh, Lee Janger is up next.
Thank you. You hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm Lee Janger, a twenty-year resident on Ridgefield Road, and I'm appearing in opposition to the West Bard Residence petition. I also appeared today on behalf of over eighty households throughout the Springfield neighborhood, representing over two hundred residents who strongly object to the West Bard petition and signed an opposing petition that is now part of the public record. Those signing in opposition belong Ridgefield, Albia, Newington, Kirkwood, Jordan, Ogden, and Springfield Roads. All of our, all of these streets have seen excessive traffic since the realignment project started. Our opposition is simple. Closing West Bard Avenue will simply transfer the danger West Bard lobbies against to the detriment of Ridgefield Road and other residents. Every fear that West Bard residents stated here today, every one of them has existed on all of these roads, especially Ridgefield Road. And none of their evidence has cited those dangers or that it will be alleviated by the closure of West Bard. So closing West Bard and transferring that to, is against the public's interests. The council should not grant relief to one street at the expense of others. Entire Springfield neighborhood deserves relief from the dangerous cut-through traffic. Closing West Bard Avenue will simply make those residents cut-through traffic up Ridgefield Road, avoiding the lights to River Road. Ridgefield Road and the adjacent streets are home to numerous school-aged children, three school bus stops, and narrow winding streets. Closing off access will not end that cut-through traffic, just pushing it more onto, into those, where those childrens live and walk.
We are at time, if you could wrap up, please.
Right. West Bard residents are seeking relief, again, at the expense of their neighbors, to eat their twenty-four homes instead of the others. M C Dot's stated position on their website is to provide equitable traffic relief to everyone. This is not equitable, it is not safe, and it is unfair. We ask that you look to all, to, for traffic mitigation efforts to all of the neighborhood at the same time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, um, have up next Hassan.
We have a few more minutes, so we can go on for a little bit longer.
I have Hassan up next. Hassan Javadi, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Um, I can talk about my, my-
Okay. Yes, sir.
My, my wife is not home, but she has given her time to pin, but- My wife is not home, but she has given her time to spend, but I will have my own time. Shall I? Can I show?
Yes, you can proceed.
Mute. I don't know. My picture doesn't come somehow. It doesn't matter. I am here. I am Hassan Javadi. I have been living in this, in West Bard Avenue, fifty-five sixteen for thirty-two years. And I have really noticed quite a quite a number of accidents and pollution here. And the thing is that from River, from River Road, when it is open, they are using it as a kind of access road very easily. And you remember that last time they were, I mean, it was from seven o'clock to nine o'clock, it was turned into West Bard was not allowed. And very often policemen were there and there were quite a number of accidents. And now the development, new development, it will increase the whole situation and the accidents as well as possibility of danger, traffic accidents. I understand the apprehension of the, of our neighbors in the Ridgefield Road, but it is not really, it is not really something substantial. I don't think it will inconvenience them all that much. The thing that they were, they are mostly afraid of that it will become, I mean, their neighborhood, too many accidents there. But it was when, as one of the neighbors, it was because the two sides were closed and the new road was not open.
We're at time. So if you could wrap up, please.
Yeah, I am for the closure of the neighborhood. I mean, closure of the West Bard from there.
Thank you. Okay.
My apologies. I was on mute. I have uploaded the list. I realize I may have copied someone who had already had time, but Philip, now is your time, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Philip Pratia, President of the Board of Directors at Kenwood Place Condominium, fifty-three oh-one West Bard Circle. I submitted a written statement, but I will be brief with a summary of the points raised in that written statement. Representing our association and all our unit owners, we adamantly oppose the closure. Please deny the request. Our one hundred and seventy-four units, six being small business commercial units, account for a total population of about four hundred. Without a doubt, the development will grow the population by more than seven hundred and fifty. While public safety and accessibility are our top concerns, we feel that emergency medical and first responders must have unimpeded access to answer any potential threats. New senior housing may increase the need for these emergency access and services. Our unit owners must have the same access available as when they initially purchased their homes and so do our small business unit owners. We appreciate the time that you've given us to hear our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Catherine Peterson. Next, Catherine. Unless under another name, I do not have Ms. Peterson in the chat. Navi? Is up next, Navi? Not seeing that name in the chat either. Please let me one second check the last name. No, sir, that name's not in there either. We do have Carly Two with their hand raised and I believe a request to make a comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity. One thing that hasn't been mentioned and I'd like to bring up is that there is an effort by the State Highway Transportation Group to do a safety study of River Road and it includes these two intersections in its boundaries. So I think that this feels a little premature and I'd love to see a collaboration of our county and our state departments working on making this place safer. I will speak on behalf of cyclists. Closing this intersection would make it safer. Uncontrolled intersections are more dangerous. The bike lanes on River Road headed towards the Capitol Crescent Trail is a downhill which you can pick up some speed and creates just more danger for cyclists in that area. And the less ins and outs onto the road does support Vision Zero from a cyclist's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional requests in the chat. I see a hand raised. Is that your discretion, Mr. Thamana?
Yes, we can take that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to speak on behalf of my husband, Ben Caden. He, his name wasn't called, but he did provide written testimony. So, sir, I'll just read it very quickly. Thank you. My name is Benjamin Caden. I live at fifty-five eleven West Bard Avenue on the fifty-five-hundred block of West Bard. I live here with my wife and my four-year-old son and we are expecting our second in a few weeks. We moved to our house in mid-two thousand twenty-two. We did so with the understanding, with the trust that the county would live up to its promise to consider the needs of the families on this block and close the West Bard River entrance in order to protect the safety of our kids. I'm truly worried about the safety of my kids walking along our block if the entrance were to open. It would become an unnecessary illegal driveway with cars and trucks racing through to get to the new shop, shopping center. And in fact, the entrance isn't even needed. The newly aligned West Bard Avenue was constructed specifically to address traffic flow around this area. Why unnecessarily burden and jeopardize the safety of our families? Thank you.
Thank you. Have you reached the end of all the registered speakers?
I have.
Okay.
I have one hand raised. I'm not sure if that's
Is that somebody that has already spoken or is this a?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so at this time, if we've already given them an opportunity, then we'd keep it to that. So with that, I'll now turn it back over to you, Tiara.
Right. As previously mentioned, comments, the record will be left open until October third. You're welcome to submit comments to me via email at tiara, T-I-A-R-A, period McCray, M-C-C-R-A-Y, at MontgomeryCountyMD.gov or via mail at one hundred Edison Park Drive, fourth floor, Gaithersburg, Maryland. If you have any additional questions, you may also give me a call. I believe everyone here has my contact number if you've received an invitation to this hearing.
All right. With that, I think we can go ahead and close this hearing. There is no need for a second meeting at this time because everybody that registered to speak did get an opportunity to speak. We will consider all comments, both written and oral, as we move forward with this process. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.